We've never been down here on time.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November 21st Conference and Business Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Regal, would you be kind enough to call her all for us?
Dr. Alan Stuck?
Present.
Colleen, Ms. Colleen Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Dr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Menji?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here. I believe Mr. Sinto had a business obligation this evening. I'll accept a motion to approve the official minutes of the November 7th Regular Public Board Meeting.
First and basis?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. No one has signed up in advance for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board this evening? Okay. So we'll move on to student reports tonight. We have Hannah Swursting from the middle school and Elizabeth Jocelyn from the high school.
Thank you. My name is Hannah Swursting, and I would like to thank you all for allowing me to present to you tonight. I'm in eighth grade at Haverford Middle School, and I am involved in cross-country and gold team at school. Outside of school, I'm involved in soccer. I went to Chatham Park Elementary School. Our winter sports season has begun. Students are trying out for the basketball teams, the wrestlers are getting ready to begin practices, and the indoor track team will be meeting soon. The Student Council had another very successful food drive for needy families in our community. They collected hundreds of non-perishable food items and will be distributing them for Thanksgiving. American Education Week is being observed this week. American Education Week is a wonderful opportunity for us to celebrate public education and honor everyone who worked for and on behalf of the school district to ensure that we receive a quality education. So thanks to all of you. Families will be visiting our classrooms tomorrow between 8:00 and 2:00 p.m. Student-led conferences will be held on November 25th, 26th, and 27th. School will be dismissed at 10:50 a.m. on conference days. We are looking forward to a few days off of school on November 28th and 29th to celebrate Thanksgiving and spend time with our friends and family. The seventh and eighth grade musical will be High School Musical Junior. We have a lot of great students in the show, and the leads are John Phillips, who will play Troy Bolton, and Jesse Smith, who will play Gabriela Martinez. High School Musical will open on February 27th and run through February 29th. Our annual instrumental winter concert will be held on Tuesday, December 3rd, at the Haverford High School Auditorium. The concert will begin at 7:00 p.m., and we are looking forward to the concert and wonderful music as it will welcome the winter months. Seventh Heaven will be performing at the Philadelphia Flyers game on December 5th. They will be singing in the lobby by Section 111 before the game. Information is posted on the main page of our website if you would like to purchase a ticket to the game and support Seventh Heaven. Our choral department is sponsoring our annual Children's Hospital of Philadelphia toy drive. The toy drive will run until December 6th. We collected over 2,200 toys last year and truly appreciate the generosity of our families. Please remember, all toys donated must be new and unused toys, and there is a child wish list posted on our website if you need some ideas. Donations may be dropped off in Room 242, the chorus room, or any of the grade level offices in order to be delivered, sanitized, and distributed to the children at the hospital.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Jocelyn, and I'm a senior at Haverford High School. Thank you for having me back tonight to give another report at the happenings over at the high school. Yesterday, No Place For Hate hosted a Fishbowl discussion about mental health awareness. This student-led conversation addressed the topic of how mental health issues affect students' performances at Haverford and what the school should do to accommodate these students. The Fishbowl brought over 50 students, 15 teachers, and the entire counseling department who attentively listened to what the students had to say. This past weekend was Drama Club's Fall Musical, James and the Giant Peach. The show sold over 1,200 tickets across four performances and brought audience members of all ages. Last night, 76 students were inducted into the National Business Honor Society. Fifty-three of these inductees were new members that met all of the requirements of the Honor Society, upholding involvement, leadership, and achievement in a business setting. Over the past month, the National Honor Society has been selling pies to raise money for the annual holiday gift drive. Students were able to sell over 1,900 pies this year. All pies will be delivered to the school and sorted by Honor Society students on Tuesday. Winter sports officially began their season this past Monday. Basketball, indoor track, wrestling, and swimming are all underway with scrimmages coming up this weekend. Cheerleading won back-to-back competitions last weekend, taking first place at Westchester East on Saturday and Central Bucks East on Sunday. This Saturday, the girls will travel to Kutztown for their regional competition. After a long and impressive season and 10 consecutive wins, the football team ended their playoff run last Friday after losing to Downingtown West with an impressive score of 49 to 42. The football team plays one final game at the Annual Turkey Bowl against Upper Darby next week on Thanksgiving morning. The Turkey Bowl is considered to be Haverford's homecoming game, and the homecoming festivities are well underway. This week has been Spirit Week, and every day has had a designated theme. There was America Monday, Tie-Dye Tuesday, and Hawaiian Wednesday. Today was Meme Day Thursday, and tomorrow is Fords Friday. This all leads up to tomorrow night's annual Homecoming Dance. This year's theme is casino, and it will be the largest homecoming yet with over 1,300 students attending. Student senate and the class officers have been working tirelessly to make decorations and ensure that the entire school is covered in spirit. The homecoming festivities even continue next week with the faculty basketball game against Upper Darby on Monday night, the bonfire and powder puff game on Tuesday night, and the pep rally on Wednesday afternoon. As always, thank you for allowing me to present tonight, and I hope you continue to enjoy hearing about all the happenings in busy times at the high school. Thank you.
So Elizabeth, what do you dress to be a meme?
Oh, you know, students took it in different ways. A lot of students chose just kind of like funny images. It was, they were pretty creative, I would say.
Thank you both very much for your report.
Thank you both.
The next item on our agenda is recognition of professional and support staff for 25 years of service. Mr. Parker, Dr. Rucci?
The employees that we celebrate this evening have devoted 25 years of their lives to this work. Tonight, we wish to express our deep appreciation for your achievement of this milestone. Loyal and dedicated employees like you are the foundation of a district like ours. Thank you for the contributions that you have made to our success. We congratulate you on this career highlight and wish you the best for many more years to come. Mr. Parker will call the names of those folks we're recognizing tonight. I think you will agree with me, it is quite, quite a milestone, and look at all of the ways in which these folks have impacted our district. These are all varied employees from all of our employee groups who have touched the lives of so many individuals in our community.
Thank you, Dr. Rucci. My pleasure, although I look at this list and I say, no way, 25 years. But apparently so. And so to begin with, from our Facilities Department, Maintenance Custodian, Sub-Departments, Denise Pelka from Chatham Park. Please come through.
Your principal, a lovely note which I will be sharing with the board. Lovely note.
Stay around for some photos. Joseph Garrity. Nice to see you, Joe. And from professional staff, we'll begin with Dr. Finn, Jason Finn. Damana Jackson from the high school.
Middle school.
High school.
Nice to see you. And Wendy Wallow. And last but not least, Patricia Young. All right. Now, anyone that we've left out here that is in attendance that we didn't know about? No? Okay. We will mention, though, Ricardo Latrano, Megan Romano, and Luke Sullivan as additional professional staff who are not with us. Group photo.
While we are recognizing years of service, we want to call to everyone's attention this evening that tonight is the final board meeting for three of the members who are seated here with us this evening. Dr. Martin has served this board for 16 years. Dr. Alan Stuck has served our board for seven years. Colleen Bennett is pinch hitting or making a return appearance. She's been our steady go-to when we have needed support, and you've jumped in and helped us. And each of those board members are completing their term, so this is the last evening that they will be here with us. And in our, as our tradition continues, Dr. Alan Stuck, if you would please come up to the podium, we give our departing board, our members who are no longer going to be working with us, a print, a print of the school in the district. Dr. Martin, if you could please approach the podium. Although it could have been your third.
I know you are.
Thanks and congratulations again to our staff for 25 years and for these board members. We'll speak more about the board members a little later. Next item on our agenda is Linwood Construction Project update. Ken Matthews, and for those of you who've been driving up and down Lawrence Road, you know things are popping over there, so.
Yes, thank you, Larry. Things are moving along very well. You can see the steel's continuing. We just finished foundations last week, so that's done. The carpenter started this week, started to frame the exterior skin of the building, so that's another great milestone. Roofwork should be starting in another two weeks or so, two to three weeks, they'll be starting that. So you really start to see the building getting closed and take shape. Steel will continue for another probably six to eight weeks as well. So no issues to speak of on schedule, if not ahead of schedule, so that's all great things to report. So this evening, we have a couple change orders and some professional services to present. We have two for Westcott Electric. One is we have to install a new pole for the fiber that comes into the building. We were hoping at the early point of design to reuse the existing pole that's there, but with phasing and having to get the new fiber in ahead of the existing linwood being demolished, we need to install this pole. So it's for $1,729. The second change for Westcott, electrical inspections vary from township to township. Haverford Township does not provide electrical inspection services. For example, they come and they inspect the foundations, they come and inspect the underground plumbing, but they don't inspect electric. It was left out of our specifications, so it needs to be put, it needed to be put back into the project. It's a third-party agency is hired under the electrician, and that's here for $33,412. The third change is for Steubner. This is, you know, the schedule, we kind of pulled it back a little bit. The steel was ahead of schedule, so a lot of the skin of the building that I was talking about needs to be done through the winter months. And there's an air vapor barrier that gets put on the building to protect water from getting in, but allow the building to breathe, so to speak. So we wanted to use an upgraded material so we can get through the winter months. And it isn't, it's not temperature sensitive, so it's a much better product. And so for a small amount of $1,890, it seems like the right thing to do to keep the schedule moving and not cause any delay in the progress of the work. So those are the three change orders for this evening, if anybody has any questions.
The electrical inspection is done by someone certified by the state?
It's a certified third-party agency. That's all they do. So they come out, they inspect all the underground electric, is everything grounded properly, all of those type of things. So they come out throughout, as we progress, inspect before walls are closed up, you know, is everything installed properly?
Multiple visits across?
It's multiple visits throughout the entire project.
Life of the construction.
That's right.
And PICO gets a report of this?
No, PICO, no, PICO has nothing, PICO only, the only part PICO does is at the transformer, our electrician has to inspect all their wiring up to the PICO transformer, and PICO will not hook into it until all of those inspections are complete. And that, you know, there are ends that are made up that literally plug into the transformer on our end, and then PICO plugs into the transformer on their end. So that's the only interaction with them.
Got it. This must be tied into having the building insured.
Certainly, yeah. I mean, all inspections have to be closed out, all the loop has to be closed on that. That's correct.
Other questions from the board?
Ken, could you speak to why we're upgrading to an all-weather air barrier now? I mean, with weather just being so inconsistent, I'm just curious why that wasn't considered initially.
No, that's a great question. So we did, we do have one that's in the, the architect specifies this, and the material they specified is a good material, it's just a little more weather-sensitive. They probably could have specified this. That's one of the holes, you know, sometimes the holes we find in the specifications, that they could have done something a little more robust, and you can see for such a small amount of money for the whole building, it probably could have been, but the material that was specified is fine, it's just a little more sensitive. You know, if it rained today, you might have to wait an extra day to install it. This upgraded material is, has no sensitivity to water, solar exposure, so, but it could have been. That's a good point. It absolutely could have been.
And are we receiving this directly from the manufacturer, or has it been sitting in a warehouse somewhere? Because it looks like it has a shelf life of 12 months in order for all of the weatherproofness to be guaranteed.
No, the material that would come outside is new. It's nothing that's been sitting around. No, 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 no. No, all of that, it does have a shelf life, and that all comes out. And actually, that's part of, the next thing is that we have, I'm presenting is an exterior envelope consultant, roof consultant, and they help inspect these things to make sure the right materials are going in. So that's a great lead into that. Thank you. So that's the other thing we're presenting this evening. So as part of professional services on a project, we hire DBA. They inspect all the concrete, they test it, they do breaks, make sure it's up to compressive strength, et cetera. Steel's inspected, the ground's inspected to make sure it's firm for the foundations we're installing. So in the same way, there's exterior wall consultants that have become much more commonplace and critical. I'm sure everybody's heard, you know, instead of asbestos, the new asbestos is mold, and that's the last thing we want in any new building. But it does happen. So as part of preventing that, we do, we hire these consultants and recommend, we're here to recommend hiring those consultants to do that. So we have a third-party roof consultant, that's all they do. They do Mark Sobek and his firm that we're recommending this evening. And we did solicit proposals from four firms, and we got those proposals, tried to level them out. There was different pricing, different staff. So these are the folks that we're recommending after receiving all of them. So Mark Sobek for the roof, he represents Penn State. I mean, he does hundreds and hundreds of roofs all around the greater Philadelphia area. They're out of Scranton. We've worked with them in the past. They've been a tremendous asset to the project. So there, we're recommending them to do inspection, and they'll review the documents as well and make any recommendations. So theirs is a not-to-exceed of $15,000. So they'll come out every few days and meet with the roofers, inspect the work, make sure it's going in properly, it's closed up at the end of each day. The second one is recommending the Stonehouse Group to do the exterior wall consulting. So to the vapor barrier, Kim, that you were just talking about, is that going on properly? Is it being done in, you know, correct temperatures? Is it being applied, et cetera? They'll look at the windows, the caulk, all of those things where you have water infiltration issues in buildings. So they'll be a great asset to the team, and I know KCBA, the Architect of Record, they certainly recommend having these type of consultants on their projects. And waterproofing as well, below-grade foundation waterproofing.
Ken, these are presented as a separate category of things from change order. Does that mean we had already budgeted for this work, and now we're just finding the specialists to do it?
Yes, so it was always planned for similar to the geotechnical engineer, the concrete inspection. We had a lump-sum figure for additional services in the project, in the main project budget. And so that, these would come out of that $200,000 line item.
It was just an allocation of budget line, not a change to?
That is correct.
And then in the write-up that we received, it said that Stonehouse was an example of a firm that could do the roof as well as the exterior? Could you just speak to why you're recommending two different contractors instead of one who could do both?
Honestly, it was after working with both firms, they're both very capable, it's just, Mark Sobek is just such an expert, he's been doing it for 40-some years. So for that higher level of expertise, and the roof is such a critical item, that was the only reason. And the Stonehouse Group could do a good job as well, but just felt a little strong, and they were in the same price range, a little bit less actually. So felt like it was a good opportunity for the district.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
You didn't hurt your finger on the job, did you?
No.
Yes. Thanks.
All right, great, thank you.
If anybody would like to sneak out before we dive into test scores, you're welcome to.
Where you gonna be, y'all?
Next item on our agenda is state and national testing results, including AP and SAT scores. It's Christensen and Mr. Moyer.
Is that mine? Is that mine? Okay, good. Good evening, Mr. Feinberg, Dr. Rucci, school board members, administrator staff, community members as well this evening. It's our pleasure to be here. Tonight, we are going to provide a review of the 2019 state and national testing for the school district of Haverford Township. This will include a breakdown of grades three through eight in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science PSSA scores by school. We'll do the same for the middle school. And Dr. Moyer, Dr. Gary Moyer, our new Student Information System and Data Administrator, say that five times fast, he'll review our Keystone Exam scores, our ACT, SAT, and RAP data as well. But before we begin with the PSSA overview, wanted to take a moment to talk a little bit about data in general. So we review the state and the national assessment results to help provide context for our community, because this is the data that is so predominantly published and shared via newspapers or other social media sites. It's important for us to review this information with the community to provide context and perspective for all of our stakeholders. However, we need to reiterate that this is one piece of information, and therefore, it's an incomplete picture of what's happening in our schools. We provide ongoing data in a variety of ways to share insights into the experiences and successes occurring throughout our schools, embedded in many of the school board presentations. Many of them are listed on this slide. These are all pieces of the puzzle, and together, they complete a full picture of the Haverford experience. But even the data that's provided by a lot of these action steps on this slide is still not an exhaustive list. So although we'll be going over the data tonight, we just wanted to remind everyone of all of the data that we share throughout the course of the year. But tonight, we're here to review our state and our national testing, so let's start with the PSSA assessment. It is true that the PSSA assessment is governed with a significant level of mandated compliance regulations. However, our teachers and our administrators are extremely sensitive and in tune with the importance of providing the most natural and relaxed testing environment possible for our students. We strive to keep things as typical as possible and encourage families to do the same at home. The PSSAs are assessments that test our grade-level standards, and we encourage our students to do their best and to show how much that they've learned throughout the course of the year. The average student testing time for each of the session is between an hour and an hour and a half. This is not a timed test, so it's important to remember that students can take as long as they want, but that's the typical time in which students are testing throughout the sections. English Language Arts Assessment is three sections long, and the math section, the science section are two sections long. So it's a little bit about what the PSSA administration looks like. So when we move into some of the data, and those numbers are small, I apologize for that. So here we see the three-year trend of our PSSA results for our third-grade students. In all of the PSSA slides, the green bar will be the 2016 results, the blue bar the 2018, and the yellow will be the 2019 results. The chart on the top reflects our school district's grade, or our third-grade ELA results by school. The third-grade district average was 87%. And we can compare this to the state average, which was 61.9%. And you can see the district average bar indicated in a thick black line, and as well, the gray line shows you a visual of the state average line. The lower chart reflects the third-grade math assessment scores. The Haverford School District third-grade math average was 83.6, and this can be compared to the state average, which was 56%. Last year, the district goal was third-grade math as a global area of focus, and we can see the results of those efforts. This year, the goal work was much more specific and a collaborative developmental process. Focus areas were identified with the schools that needed it the most, based on multiple forms of data, including but not limited to PSSA achievement and growth data. The goals were derived during conversations between building principals and curriculum department, and they vary from building to building. Our next slide shows us the fourth-grade PSSA assessment results. Our fourth-grade ELA average for Haverford was 87.2%. The state average was 63.6%. Our fourth-grade math average was 70.2% compared to the 46.2% state average. Now, when you're looking at these individual school scores, it's important to remember the number of students in each of the reporting categories. If you think about our average class size by building of being around 100, each percentage point basically represents one. point basically represents one child. So, when you're looking at changes, it's important to keep the number of students in Our fifth-grade district average for ELA was 82.6 compared to the state average of 58.5. Haverford School District's fifth-grade math average was 68.7, and the state average was 43.1%. Now, a district average of 68.7 may seem a little bit low for us, but this is still 25% higher than the state. But to break that down even further, Haverford had 31% of our students obtaining advanced level proficiency, while the state had 16%. Science assessments are given in grades four and eight.
Can I ask a quick question? And I've wondered this for years. Like, how does the state feel about the fact that the statewide average for grade five in math is 43%?
So, for math, their expressed statement about that is that math instruction needs to improve. Yeah. So, if we found that a final exam, for example, or a benchmark assessment that was given in this district had a similar record of an average, we would make changes to the exam as well as take a look at the instruction and the resources and all of those things? That is not something that the state has expressed any desire to do.
So, they have full confidence in the test?
They do, in the math test.
And not confidence in our math students?
Right. Or teachers, for that matter. I will say, there was one particular area of the English Language Arts Test, the analysis section, where the scores were not where the state thought they should be, and they have put, put in a two-year effort at helping districts understand better what's being asked of teachers to instruct the students, what's being asked of students. They've put some energy and some money into helping us get better at analysis. We have not seen the same thing for any portion of the math assessment, or the science, for that matter.
Is there some content that is being put into the fifth-grade assessment that we would find hard to deliver at that pace?
Oh, well, I mean, you know, all fourth and fifth-grade teachers will tell you fractions, right? Of course, fractions are one of the more complex conceptual pieces for students, but there is, it's really about what we're asking the kids to do with multi-step problems. We find the data analysis piece can sometimes be something we can put in there. We've added more graphing questions in our preparation for students. There is not just one particular area every time that we're always doing poorly on, relatively speaking. And I say relatively speaking. These test scores are scores that most of the districts in the state would be happy to have.
Right, I was speaking about maybe statewide, what's in the fifth-grade test.
Yeah, statewide. I mean, it's usually measurement and data is what usually comes up as a relative weakness, but they also have the fewest number of questions. So, if you only have two questions, it's easy to get one wrong.
I happen to be in a fifth-grade math class today for American Education Week, Parent Visitation Day, and, you know, the tests have all recently changed and gotten more difficult, the standards, I think, have also probably therefore changed and got more rigorous.
The standards.
Math standards, yeah.
The PA Core standards were adopted a few years ago, and, yes, what's being asked of students is more rigorous than in years past.
It makes sense, because the material that I witnessed today felt more like middle school than elementary school. Not that I'm opposed to exposing our kids to harder math earlier at all whatsoever, but it sort of makes sense. Your comment about the state saying you need to improve your instruction kind of makes sense, because that's sort of how they fund mandates.
All right, moving right along. So, grades four and eight, we talked about that these are the two grades that the Science PSSA is given, and our fourth-grade science average was 93.6%, and the state average was 77.8%. Grade eight science was 80%, and the state was 58.2%. Now, when we looked at each of the elementary schools, the change in percentage points was basically equivalent to one child per percentage point. But at the middle school, this is not the case. When looking at the increase of the eighth-grade scientific achievements, science achievement score, the increase from 72 to 80% reflects an increased achievement of over, of 42 students. So, the N of these groups are different, we should keep that in mind as well. If you might remember that we went through a science audit and focused on preparing students to analyze tables, and graphs, and diagrams, and additional data. The scientific practices are a large part of the science PSSA exam, and we continue to stress those practices throughout the new curriculum as well.
Just a quick question about the science. Can you remind me, is the eighth-grade science test and the fourth-grade, are they cumulative? So, like, for example, the eighth-grade test would be fifth, sixth, and seventh and eighth-grade content?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, jumped ahead, just apologize. The focus during the 2018-19 school year was sixth-grade math, and we see a gain in achievement yielding a positive increase in achievement scores. It's also important to keep in mind that there are many ways to view these data points. If you take a moment to look at the eighth-grade ELA, it looks like there might be a concern. But when we look at a different set of data that measures growth, it shows that our students actually exceeded the standard of growth in eighth grade for ELA. This is why we never make decisions based on one data point, and we need to be very cautious about understanding what data we are looking at and what it means as one piece of the puzzle and not the whole picture. Just for the sake of everyone in the room, because those numbers are small, if we look at ELA sixth grade, our average was 88%, and the state was 63%. ELA seventh grade was 85%, where the state was 60.4%. Eighth grade was 83%, and the state, compared to the state, 57.9%. For our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade math scores, sixth grade was 67%, whereas the state was 39%. Seventh grade, 60%, where the state was 38.2. And for eighth grade, 60% again, and the state was 32.2%. And now, I'm going to ask Dr. Moyer to share with us the Keystone and the high school assessment results.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Let's see. This slide shown here displays the results of the Keystone assessments taken over the past three years in each of the three subject areas, that is Algebra I, Biology, and Literature. The green bar represents the scores for our 2017 cohort, blue bar is our 2018 cohort, and the yellow bar is our 2019 cohort. The scores themselves indicate the total percentage of the cohort that achieved a score of advanced or proficient on each of the tests. For 2019, the cohort of 425 total students had 92.9% of its students' score advanced or proficient. As you can see by the line, the state average for the same test was 63.3% advanced or proficient. For Biology, 85.2% of the same cohort scored advanced or proficient, while the state average was only 63.2. The final graph shows that 90.6% of the 2019 cohort scored advanced and proficient in Literature compared to the state average of 71.5. This slide displays the average SAT scores for the Haverford High School over the past five years, 2015 through 2019. For 2019, there were 345 individual students who took a total of 765 SAT tests. The average of their best scores in each are shown here. Scores for reading in 2019 averaged 597, while for math, students had an average of 613. These scores are each up slightly from 2018, for a composite average of 1210. It's important to note that the average SAT score for the class of 2019 nationally was down slightly, 10,000, or 1,059 compared to 1,068 for the class of 2018. This chart shows us the five-year trend within each of the four subject areas that comprise the ACT. Dark blue bar is representative of the 2019 test results. The ACT is not quite as popular as the SAT for our students. In 2019, there were only 129 individual students who took the ACT exam. With smaller cohorts of students participating, you can have more variability in the scores. In 2018, for example, only 88 students took the test, which may have helped the average scores reach the levels that they did. Scores for 2019 were English 23.3, math 24, reading 23.9, science 23.1, with the average ACT score reported for the 2019 nationally was 21.
Question?
Yes.
You know, if you look at the middle-school math scores, and in the context of the previous question of statewide, and then you look at our Keystone math scores, or our SAT math scores, or our ACT math scores, there seems to be a bit of a disconnect.
One might come with that conclusion, correct?
So, it seems like somehow, our students are being infused with math knowledge in spite of what the middle-school PSSA scores would indicate.
We've had the same conversation many times about asking, asking the right question, and is the purpose of our elementary and middle-school programs to prepare our students to be successful in their high school as they transition into either career and/or college? And much of the data supports that, yes, it is. You know, despite what some conclusions may be based on the PSSA results.
And it's my recollection that we pretty much have this discussion every year.
I think so.
I would like to applaud the efforts of our, all of our K through 12 teachers in getting the students to this level of understanding. We do have some programs for the Keystone Algebra I, as well as the Bio, where we offer year-long Algebra. So, some students who indicate that they may benefit from such a program will get 80 minutes all year long of Algebra, and this helps to bring their scores to a proficient. And then, we also offer an Algebra seminar course to those who don't pass Algebra the first time, so they can have another opportunity to learn those standards and take the test again. And that does help capture some of the students that don't get a similar opportunity to retake an eighth-grade test. So, that may be some of the reason that you see, you know, statewide, the average go up for Algebra. It's a shame that we don't have the opportunity to do the same for the others.
A question about the ACTs. So, it seems like our number of students taking the ACTs is a moving target. Any idea why? Like, in the Northeast, it's not as much of an ACT area as other parts of the country, but are we promoting it? I'm just, I'm just curious about how we look at the ACTs.
It has been promoted. I think it's regional, as you said, and it's somewhat tied to the schools that our students are applying to, what the schools are requesting of our students. Might not, you know, push the ACT score as much as the SAT.
Do we offer the ACTs at Haverford? Can you take it on location?
We have in the past. I don't know whether the plan...
Once a year, got it, okay. Thanks.
In 2019, there were 571 individual students enrolled in one of Haverford High School's AP courses. As you may know, we have some students who are enrolled in multiple AP courses. Of those 571 students, there were a total of 440 who took at least one AP exam. There were a total of 884 AP exams taken in 2019, so you could see that many students took multiple exams. 386 out of 480, excuse me, 386 out of 440 students who took AP exams scored a three, four, or five, resulting in an 87.7% success rate, which compares to the state average of 67.8% success rate. And some AP news of note, the number of test takers in 2019, that was 440, was the highest ever at the high school. 2019 saw the highest number of three, fours, and fives in history at the high school as well, all while administering 133 more tests in 2019 than it had previously in 2018. And fully 41.9% of the graduating seniors of the class of 2019 passed an AP test. All right. All right, the next three slides are going to be scatter plots that show Keystone score results. There are three-year average score result culminating in the year 2019. On these scatter plots, each dot will represent the average score of an individual school. If a school's dot is in the upper-right or first quadrant, it's kind of 12 o'clock to 3 o'clock, if you drew that box. That indicates that the tested students in that school have made adequate achievement and positive growth. The farther the school's dot is away from the intersection of the boundaries, the higher the achievement and/or the greater the evidence of growth. According to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, some apply the term "excelling" to schools that have students that fall in this quadrant. This first scatter plot shows the Keystone Algebra I scores, and we have two data points on this scatter plot, one for the middle school and one for the high school, because each has a cohort that takes the Algebra I Keystone after they take the Algebra course in that school. And as you can see, Haverford's scores are located in that first upper-right quadrant. This is a scatter plot for the literature scores, and this shows, again, that our scores are in that first quadrant. And you can tell just by the placement of that dot that Haverford is among the highest scorers in the state.
And then, just help me interpret it, with the center line being average growth index, this is saying high scoring, but more consistent, not as much change from year to year, is because it's only slightly to the right of the center?
My understanding is that, yes, it's, it's high in the achievement axis, but it's not far from the center line, so that the expectation growth year over year was met, but not exceeded.
Okay, and so, comparing it to the one before, there's high achievement, but more growth because it's further to the right, isn't that what that...
Oh, yeah. Yes. Compared to the, the Algebra scores, it's higher achievement, kind of, the middle school shows a higher achievement. It's important to note, too, that when middle schools give their students the Keystone Test in Algebra, they're presenting the test to a cohort of students who are excelling compared to their grade-level peers. So, it's, it's a much stronger group of students.
And apples and oranges. And, and the center line, the zero average growth index, that's the strong evidence that the student has made one year of growth, so they've kept their relative position. So, ideally, your goal is to be at that line or beyond it. So, if you're beyond it, you are showing an increased level of growth.
And is that growth from, like, one-year time, like, 18 to 19? You know what I'm saying?
It's from one year to the next.
It's a one-year growth, and the state has an algorithm that it, it inputs a lot of different data points together to come up with that, that growth figure, what that growth figure should be.
Based on the student's performance, that similar performance the year before across the level of the state. This, though, it says 2019, one of the things that we do need to mention is to plot these data points. It's a three-year average of, of the assessment, so...
Culminating in 2019.
Culminating in 2019.
And the final slide is our Biology data point, and you can see also that we're in the upper-right quadrant showing growth and achievement. And these scatter plots are a vivid illustration of the success of our students relative to other schools in Pennsylvania.
So, speaking of our successful students, and led by our amazing teachers and administrators, why is Haverford so successful? We talked about this a little bit in the beginning of the presentation. We have a district that does focus on the whole child, not just the academics. We support numerous and offer numerous clubs, activities, music, sports, to really engage the student and have research, as we all know and have been doing more and more, speaking of, the more connected, the more sense of belonging a student feels to their school, to their teachers, to their staff, academic achievement is going to increase. So, there is an absolute correlation between how a student feels, the district's focusing on the whole child, and the academic success. We have curriculum that's aligned to the state standards.
We have curriculum that's aligned to the state standards. There's a conscience effort with a curriculum cycle to make sure that we are providing updated resources, instructional delivery practices. We also have supports to, that are put in place and resources for supporting instruction in the classroom with coaches and the curriculum coordinators. So we have a lot of supports aligned with our curriculum to the PA State standards. Our reputation, Haverford does have a very strong reputation, not only locally, but also across the state. That does allow us to attract the best teachers and the best administrators when we do have openings. Clearly, that is, that is adding to what is successful in our, in our school district. We also have a community that supports education, holds high expectations for our children. We have a school board that puts the decisions of children first, and we have very involved supportive families at home. So when you combine all of those factors, we really do have something special here in Haverford that is yielding in this academic success. So thank you for all of your continued support, your collaboration. It's, we're not done. The goal is always continuous improvement, so we will continue to look for ways to improve our students' experience, both academically, but as well as our social-emotional learning that occurs throughout the district.
Question about the AP exams. In the past, we would get to see a grid about how students did on the test per test, so like this AP Psych, or AP European, or whatever. And I think that's helpful to see. I also think that would be helpful for students and parents to see, like, this semester, when we had to decide, are you going to take the AP exams next semester? Just to see what percentage of students who took the exam, Spanish is a good example, because you only offer Spanish in the fall, the exams in the spring, what percent are getting a four or higher? Because most colleges really only take a four or higher. So to me, that's more valuable information than the three or higher. So to think, well, if, you know, if ten percent or fifty percent pass with a four or higher, seems like, and you're getting an A in the class, let's take the exam. You're getting a C in the class, only forty percent get a four or higher, maybe don't take the test. I just don't think we have any information to decide if we should be opting in for the test. And I know college board's whole business model is, take the test, because that's the only way they make money. But for parents, eighty dollars a test, you, you kind of want to know. And, and the students, the colleges are looking at the rigorous schedule they're taking. The college will never know if they don't take the test, because by the time, if they're taking a senior, by the time they go, they don't send the transcript and it doesn't matter. So I just think that's a piece of information that'll be really valuable for parents and students to have when they have to make that decision.
Absolutely.
Yeah. It's a great suggestion. We'll talk to the AP teachers and the curriculum office about being able to help provide that information to make informed decisions for the parents and the families of our students.
Great. That'd just be helpful. Thanks.
Thank you.
I will say, no, with a student who's in the high school, it does sound like the teachers have that information about how their classes have done in the past, and so they might be getting it in the classroom, leading up to the decision to take the test, and kind of cheering them on to-
Yeah.
Like, encouraging them, but having it be broadly available would be helpful, too.
Sending, making sure it gets sent home.
And maybe even when people are scheduling, too. Like, you know, this, this class, people take it, but not that many get a four or five. So, you know, just when they're taking it ahead of time, just to think about if it's worth it.
Thank you.
We have the opportunity to see this data disaggregated for students from, you know, students of color, low-income backgrounds, students with IEPs. I think that would be aligning our basis work and those goals with our data. Is there an opportunity for us to take a look at those disaggregated-
We can absolutely do that.
Is there a reason why that was left out of this presentation?
Well, it hasn't been presented in the past that way, so we didn't include it. It wasn't done on purpose or intentional, but we can absolutely make sure that we put that out there. It's also on the future-ready index disaggregated, but we can provide that based off the-
It'd be nice to be included with the full presentation to the community.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Other questions from the board?
I have a question. The, my understanding that Governor Wolf, one of his initiatives was to reduce the amount of testing, and that, that went into place this year, can-
Last year.
Last year?
Twenty-two percent reduction in the PSSA exams.
So what does that translate to for-
So if we go back to the second slide, the old format was that there were four sections of ELA, and that was reduced to three sections. There used to be three sections of the math PSSA, and that was reduced down to two sections. I apologize, I misquoted. And then the science was a reduction in numbers. So yes, overall, there was a twenty-two percent reduction in the amount of testing that occurred, but that happened in the seventeen, eighteen school year.
And did that impact the number of days of testing that we do also, or just hours?
The way we do it, it did, because we do typically one section per day. So for our ELA testing window, whereas before it would have been four separate days of testing, it went down to three. But not for the entire day, it was just for the, the amount of time in the morning when the students were testing. So in math, we used to do one section a day, so that would have been three sections, but as of the change, it went down to two days. So in total, here in Haverfordtown, we do three, four, five, six, seven days of, of assessments, because we do one section per day.
But it's important to note, I think, that they, while they gave us less days, they haven't taken away any material. Am I right? I mean, we still have to teach exactly what we taught when they had a bigger test, maybe a better chance.
The algebra content did not change, so yes.
How will you use this data, if at all?
Oh, we definitely use, we definitely use the data. It's a piece of the puzzle. So we do look at achievement. It can be broken down by student achievement levels. The principals look at this data, the teachers look at this data, to make sure we have an idea of, of where our students individually are performing, so we can use that to either backfill or move forward, so we are meeting the needs of all of our children. But it's one piece of data. There's also the P VOS growth data that we look at, there's the benchmark, the summative informative assessment data, and the curriculum data that we use. So it's a piece of the larger puzzle, but it's used. I mean, it's important data. We're not discounting it, but it's one piece that's provided during one, one portion of the school year.
Well, a very simple use of the test is bragging. I mean-
Yeah, I get that.
We can look at the spread, we're twenty-five percent over the state, which then explains that last one about attracting the best teachers. You would really rather teach where you're going to have an impact.
I think to Ari's point, though, I mean, are students placed in intervention groups, or they given extra supports, maybe if they're not in the statistics that we saw this evening?
Not based solely on the PSSA data, no. Is that one of the indicators that we would include when we're screening, or we're looking holistically as the children when we start the school year? Yes, but there are many other pieces of data that would be a part of those decisions, but it's, yes, something that we look at. As soon as we have that data, we're looking to see, how can we help the students that we serve?
Other questions from the board?
Did you want to talk about the opt-out piece? I know in our version of the presentation, there's a slide for it.
I did not. I have it there available to remind people if there was a question. It's helpful to see that. Just that last year, I, you know, we, we had a focus on it, because the state did change the, the formula for the opt-out, to make sure that there was an understanding of that if somebody had the question about that, because there's a pretty concrete example that there is an implication if we increase opt-out numbers. The example that is the easiest to follow is that if you have a hundred students in a grade level, and you have sixty of them who are advanced and proficient, and you have twenty of them opting out, under the old formula for Pennsylvania Department of Education, those opt-out students would just come out of the equation. So it would be sixty out of eighty students, and their performance would yield a seventy-five percent advanced or proficient rate. When Pennsylvania changed the formula, the participation kind of benchmark was ninety-five percent. So if you fell under the ninety-five percent threshold, you're, you now change the formula. So sixty of the same sixty advanced or proficient students out of ninety-five, you're falling from a seventy-five percent down to a sixty-eight point one eight percent. So sometimes people do ask about, you know, opting out and impacts on school, and if we go over the ninety-five percent threshold, it will have an impact on the reported advanced or proficient level for our schools. So it's something to keep in, in mind.
Are there any schools where that was the case, where there was an impact?
We had, there was no student, no building, I can tell you the numbers, the highest number of, of student opt-outs was the middle school. We had a total of seventy students opt-out at the middle school, but because of, because of the ninety-five percent ratio-
So we had one school at the elementary level that required additional reporting.
That was last year?
Yeah.
That was last year's, so it would have been affected the year before. But no, they, you know, they had the less number of students opt-out this year.
What kind of information gets reported to an individual parent?
As far as a student, a PSSA individual student report?
Yeah.
So the state does send home a very specific individual student report. Some of the parents are shaking their head. They get it usually October, it gets mailed home, and it's very thorough. I mean, it goes through each of the subject areas where that student fell, and it also breaks down some of the reporting anchors and categories, so there's a lot of information on there, with references to, to go to PDE website for additional information.
So a parent who opts out can't brag about how smart Johnny or Suzie is?
A parent who opts out does not have that information, because their child does not participate in the assessment.
Joe, if you're in a shopping center, brag.
We use multiple measures here, Joe.
You don't have to opt out of the whole thing at once. You can just not do a portion if you don't want.
I don't know any parents who brag about their children's PSSA.
We will end on that note. Thank you this evening.
Don't, don't leave yet. One more, we have two more questions.
Okay.
How much does it cost to take an AP exam these days?
Ninety-four dollars.
Ninety-four dollars.
And if I, if I don't have the money, do we have something in place?
Yes. One of the things that we did get back is that we had, I don't have that number in front of me, the number of students that qualify for free and reduced to lunch that do get some supports at the high school. We had a, we had a large number of students who participated in that. So yes, there are means to help support families that might not have the resources. They pay twenty dollars.
And is there a general sentiment amongst our professional staff that this, the amount of testing that we're doing is, I'm, I'm searching for the right word here, useful and do, should we be doing less, more testing, less testing? Is there any consensus?
I'll, I'll speak for them. I, I think if, if you were to look at this number on its own, no, it's, it's not. We have, and, and the reason I would say that it is not that useful is because we have other data points that Ms. Christensen referenced, Ms. Saxa referenced, you know, whether they're benchmark assessments, formative, summative assessments, that when you look at them cumulatively to get a broader picture of the student. I guess I might take your question, Mr. Feinberg, and say, if we didn't have the PSSA data and the Keystone data, would we feel at a loss? No. We have other, we have other data, other data points. This, when Sarah opened her presentation, our focus about this is because there is so much in the media, you know, that's printed, reported about schools, and we want our opportunity to tell our story with respect to that, you know, that information as, as well.
Fortunately, we don't spend an inordinate amount of time and money related to PSSAs and Keystones. I would love it if they both went away. You know, it's, I, I, I've been around here long enough, I remember before no child left behind, you know? And I, I am very much pleased to hear that the focus is on the whole child, and it's not just on these tests. So appreciate all of that. One other thing I'd just like to remind folks is that when Governor Rendell pushed through the Keystone exams, they wanted there to be ten of them in the initial package. So just, just think about that a little bit. So, you know, three, three is too much already. Anyway, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we move, before we move on, just a few remarks to make. On November thirteenth, Mr. Donaghy, Mr. Haran, Ms. Saxa, and I had an opportunity to attend the Adolescent Health School Start Time Workshop. And during that workshop, we were able to hear from administrators, some board members, and even students from districts such as Radnor, Princeton, Penn State, and Unionville-Chadford. I would just like to share tonight a few of the initial takeaways from that. Of most significance was the clear sense that we got and understanding that the many different facets that, that are impacted by a change in start time are completely unique to each and every district. Transportation needs and the bus driver shortage that we all experience is something that every district looks at. Yet in each one of those four cases, those districts brought in a consultant to look at the, the transportation. After school activity needs, we learned from one school, one district, where when they changed the start time, then they realized they had one field with lights, and the impact that that was going to create. Meeting instructional day requirements, looking at things like, how much passing time is in, is in your schedule? You know, how much lunchtime is in your schedule is, is different for each one of the districts. And that when you're looking at shortening a day, or, you know, changing the time, there are some of the variables that districts were able to maneuver. And then the impact upon the elementary students and, and their families. It was interesting that no district that we heard from made the complete flip that we used to hear about in talking about start times. Bring the little ones in earlier, they're up anyway, and have the older ones go in a little bit later. No district made that, made that change. So that was also part of their, you know, their assessment process. So those unique facets prompted a very different approach in each one of those districts. Also of interest was that each district spent a, from a minimum of two years to a maximum of four years studying those details. Not studying whether we should do this or not, not studying the research behind sleep, but, but actually going through and looking at, if we tweak it here, if we modify it here, coming up with models and trying to, to determine what a change would look like in, in their district. Overall, I think I could speak for my colleagues and say the presentations were interesting, and there is a lot to learn and a lot to consider. While I do believe it is in the interest of our students for us to at least look at what a potential system-wide change would look like if we were to change the start time, the most important first step is to identify how we undertake such an examination. And this is not an undertaking that we can adequately study without a clear process. So while we will continue to learn from our colleagues across the state and those districts which are certainly near to us, our process of investigation would not, we would look in the summer to identify what that process would be. So I wanted to intentionally make these remarks tonight, because we have had questions from people. I can tell you right now, September twenty twenty, September twenty twenty-one, our children will be coming to school the same time they are coming, they arrived, in September of twenty nineteen. What happens after that? We don't know. We will have to look at what, you know, what we want to do and weigh what those options are. Every district incurred a cost. So there's no district who was able to say they were able to do this without incurring additional costs. It's a significant undertaking, and with that being said, I, I do think we owe it to our children to look and see what that would look like, but that's not something that we are going to just jump in and say, well, what's Radnor doing? What's Laura Marion doing? What are, like, let's take their schedule and see if it works for us. That, that's, that was the real clear message from the group that day. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ruci. Moving into our, what used to be called the business meeting, but I don't know what it's called now.
Finance and facilities.
This, this item is for informational purposes- This, this item is for informational purposes only. Secretary to submit for insertion into the minutes the proof of publication related to the twenty nineteen bonds.
Thank you.
Also, Secretary to submit for insertion into the minutes the financial report as of October thirty-first, twenty nineteen. I'll accept a motion to approve the bill list.
Move.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the change orders as listed.
Move.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion?
I'd like to clarify some, the number for Westcott is wrong. It's down as thirty-three thousand four hundred twelve, but need to add the poll, the fiber poll, which is one thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars, so the total's thirty-five one forty-one.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the consultant agreements as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the educational service contract as listed.
Move.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Human Resources. I'll accept a motion to approve the retirement as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion?
End of an era.
This one's a biggie. This is, this is Joe Gallagher.
We will have an opportunity, you know, towards the close of the year, we'll be inviting those folks who will be retiring at the end of the year to a meeting where we can acknowledge them. But yes, that's a.
Do you know the years of service for Mr. Gallagher, Coach Cal? Off the top of your head?
Twenty-five.
Oh yeah, he was here last year for the twenty, for the.
Twenty-six years.
He got his clock.
Twenty-six? So am I stealing your, are you supposed to be doing this or am I?
You're doing a great job.
I like, moved. Did we vote on that?
No.
No.
But we did have a motion and a second. All in, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, we certainly had a good year going out here. It's a heck of a, heck of a season. I'll accept a motion to approve the appointments as listed.
Move.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the leaves of absence as listed.
Move. Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion?
Can't do both.
She said move before me.
You literally just said move second.
Kim said moved. I said second and moved.
Did you get who moved or second?
Moved and second.
I'll get it.
Who, who got?
Kim moved and Ari seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Student educational excursion. I'll accept a motion to approve the student educational excursion as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Informational, our reorganization meeting will be this Monday, December second, right here at six PM. It's our favorite board meeting of the year. And it shouldn't last much more than a half an hour, hopefully.
Correct.
But it's going to be interesting this year because we have, well, we'll be starting with three sitting board members at the board table and six sitting in the audience. So bring your popcorn, bring a date. Come on down. Okay. Board reports. Kristen?
Just wanted to thank Dr. Allen Stuck, Ms. Bennett, and Dr. Martin for their time and service to the board. It was a pleasure to work with you all and looking forward to work with, to working with the new folks coming in.
Great.
I echo that. I also wanted to say it has been fun to go and cheer on the Fords at the football game with, it seemed like half of Havertown filling the stands out in Downingtown. So it was, that was a great community event and a lot of school spirit around that. So thanks to the team for giving us something to cheer for. And I also wanted just to say that I was at the high school eighth grade parents kind of orientation or preview of the high school this week, and it spoke to a lot of the things that were highlighted here today. Great test scores, lots of opportunities for the kids, ways for students who have all kinds of interests and ambitions to get involved and engaged, kind of finding new, new areas to try out. And I think Mr. Donegey did a great job of being welcoming and encouraging for parents who have questions or students who have questions about high school to reach out to him or come do a shadow day and see what high school is all about. And I think we did a good job there of highlighting what a great option high school, our high school is, and so it was fun to go. We also got to tour around and see the large building that's there and then thinking about how it's going to get bigger. The students are aware of where the additions are going to be, so they pointed those out on our tour and got to see, you know, some of the amenities like the science labs and things like that. So it was a, it was a good night for me who's had a kid at the high school for a couple of years, but also for people who are new to the, to the school.
Great. All right, you guys, this is your last shot. Joe?
I'm going to give a commercial, and I'll tell you after the commercial why I think this is the proper place to do it. The Grange, the historic Grange down at Myrtle Avenue is having two thousand nineteen Winter Fest this Saturday from one PM to six PM. It has a bunch of events, but of course, we know that the train set there is incredibly famous as we come through. So that's next Saturday, okay? Now, why here? Well, it turned out that thirteen students from FBLA and Interact not only helped set things up, but they actually have their own tree and what apparently is called the nanny's room. So therefore, you can go and take a picture of yourself beside the FBLA and Interact tree. As far as me departing Middle Earth here, okay, there was a movie a long time ago, Bednobs and Brewin' Sticks. Anybody remember that? Angela Landbry. And at the end, she said, "I'm proud to have been of some small service." So I end with, "How can you miss me if I won't go away?"
Your wife is happy to get you back, though, right?
No. My idea, not hers.
All right. Mine's a little longer. So I've been on the board since July two thousand twelve, and as, as I transition off the board, I am so grateful that I had the honor and privilege of serving on the Havreford School Board District. Why am I getting emotional? On the Havreford District's Board of, ah, Board of Directors, I want to thank the people who I served with over the years. Previous board members, Dennis Gray, Patty G. and Buzzy, Jim Goldschmidt, Russ Bellata, Phil Hopkins, and Elisa Klein. And my current board members, Larry Feinberg, Bridgette Wedeman, Joe Martin, Kristen Larson, Susan Minji, Ari Fleischer, Sal Sinto. And my look-alike board member, Colleen Bennett, who encouraged me to apply for the opening on the board way back when, and I am frequently mistaken for her. I cannot thank enough all of the school board administrators and staff, especially Dr. Ruci, Mr. Parker, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Deegan, Ms. Saxa, Ms. Christensen, Ms. Batticelli, Mr. Regler, I always say it wrong, Regal, and all the central staff and principals, faculty and staff members. You are all-stars, and your innovations keep our district strong. I also want to thank Dr. Kalba, Dr. Rotoli, Dr. Brown, Dr. Burnett for your service to the district and your patience with me as I learned the role. And Jane Greenspan, who was especially nice to me when I transitioned on the board. And I miss her, and I see her every, sorry about that. Finally, I'm going to take a drink. Okay. I want to thank my family, Kevin, Adam, and Claudia for supporting me and understanding the commitment I made to serving this role. Thank you for giving me a pass for missing some of your games, performances, birthdays to attend meetings, and I'm looking forward to having my Thursdays back with you. I'm going to pull this together. To the casual observer of, of the school district, I can assure you that this is an amazing organization led by very talented people who care deeply about the growth of the children they are educating. It is a very complex enterprise with many moving parts, the student experience is always at the heart of the decision-making and priority setting. I've learned so much about K-12 public education during my time, and I look forward to reading the strategic plan that will set the course for the next five and ten years for Havreford. To the new board members, it will seem like an overwhelming amount of information, but take your time, learn as you go, and ask questions. You are, you are joining a great team, and I wish you all the best. Go Fords.
I did not register. This is my third stint on here, but I will say about Dr. Martin, my very first meeting that I had with Doc Martin, he said something, and was talking for a little while, and I'm looking around at the other board members, and I turned to whoever was next to me, and I was like, "Do you understand anything he's saying?" And they were like, "You'll get it." And you do. It just takes a while to get used to your accent and some of your, what do we call them, little like analogies?
That's the accent.
But I appreciate everything you do for the district. I don't know, everyone knows that Joe has such a connection with the township and the zoning and has such a huge history of our facilities, so you're going to be greatly missed on the board. And Kim, I won't get emotional. When I joined the board, I'd only been on the board like six months, and our current board member, Maxine, Dr. Maxine Murdock, was leaving. And at that time, there was, I was only one of three female board members on there. And so the current board members were saying, "Does anyone know someone who could fill in for Maxine?" And they said, "We need someone smart, and we need someone who knows education, and we know someone who's passionate." And I was like, "I know somebody." I called up Kim, and I said, "Did you ever think about running for school board?" And she was like, "No, tell me about it." And I told her about it, and she's like, "Yeah, I'm in." So I think she's been a great asset to the board, and I think that's all I have to say. And I'll text you at nine o'clock, Larry, on Thursdays and say, "If you're still there, wrap it up."
I'd appreciate that.
Thanks for your service and unselfish dedication to the district. It's no small feat, the amount of time that you have spent here with us, and we appreciate it. We will miss you. I just want to tell the community that I really appreciate, as we all do, the support that the staff and our township provides our students and staff to keep our building safe and have a, have a happy Thanksgiving.
I thought, I have a unique perspective. I've sat in this chair for only two years, but I sat in those chairs for a lot more, watching and listening and learning and being originally intimidated by Dr. Martin and then getting to know Dr. Martin and thinking, wow, he really knows what he's talking about. Who knew? I found that out. I am sad that we are building and you are going, Joe. He helped me my first year as a principal when they wanted to change my traffic route, and I had no idea what they were talking about. And you, I don't know if you remember, he wandered in one morning and said, "Well, what are they doing?" And I said, "I really don't know, Dr. Martin," but, and we figured it out. And I, from that moment on, I was grateful for Dr. Martin. I had the blessing of having in my school Claudia Stuck and the Bennett children and Adam Stuck. And so I got to know these two as moms, and, and that was the best. They became my friends, they became my supporters. They both mentioned that I should go for this. They didn't mean it. I don't think they meant it, and here I am. So I thank them for that. Yeah, I, I just have really enjoyed being a teacher, being an administrator, and watching you three and all the other people. So I thank you guys, really, and I'll miss you. Thanks.
All, all three of these folks have just been great assets to the board and have put so much public service into this community and the school district. I just can't thank, thank each of you enough. And certainly thank your families because I know full well about missing birthdays and whatever else comes with the territory. All three of these folks were instrumental in hiring Dr. Ruci, and that's no small feat. You know, what I've seen is just an enormous commitment of time, energy, enthusiasm, knowledge, passion, and constant focus on what's best for kids. You know, that's job one. What's best for kids? How's it going to impact the taxpayers? And that, you know, that's just been a recurring theme in everything we do. Joe, God bless you for sitting through all the commissioners' meetings, the planning commission meetings, the zoning board meetings. I don't know how we would have gotten through all the building projects without you, but I, I hear we have an apprentice. And that you, you had a head in training this, this young apprentice, so we appreciate that, too. You know, Kim was also our rep to the Delaware County Community College for a while, and both, you know, all three of you are involved in higher education, and we appreciate the perspective that you've always brought to your work. So we'll miss you, and thank, thank you very, very much. Board met an executive session to have an opportunity to review personnel issues, including appointments, retirements, and leaves of absence. Before I ask for an adjournment, I just want to give you a quick update. In celebration of American Education Week, the Speaker of the House, Mike Turzai, decided to run a voucher bill in the state legislature that would have been a kick in the teeth to the Havre, the Harrisburg School District that is in the middle of a financial recovery process. The bill just would have, for one thing, it would have provided vouchers to any kids in, in private or religious schools in their catchment area who had never even set foot in a public school. Anyway, there was a very concerted, coordinated statewide effort from all the education organizations. PSBA was extremely active, so was PSEA. The reports I got were, was that the offices at the Capitol were being flooded with phone calls and emails. And this bill was on the cal, on the legislative calendar for the House last evening. Actually, it was on the calendar for eleven o'clock yesterday morning, but they, they broke for committee and caucus meetings. They were supposed to be back at two o'clock, and the reports I got were that Speaker Turzai was screaming at the folks in the Republican Caucus to try and get them to vote for his bill. There were twenty-five Republican House members who broke with, with the speaker, and we thanked them. And I, I wish I could say this is dead, and it's not going to come back, but they could, they could come back with it in December. If not, as long as we have this secretary devout mentality of privatizing public education, we will see it come back. The last, last time, I think, was two thousand and eight, where there was actually a bill that was run. So I thank my fellow board members for, for any of their efforts in reaching out. Certainly, all of our elected officials were strong proponents of public education, and we, we don't take that for granted. We appreciate their support. I'd also like to mention that I had some back and forth with Dr. Ruci, and she worked with all the other superintendents in the county to put together a joint letter from all fifteen superintendents, asking legislators to vote no on this bill, and, and I believe that was a helpful item that was circulated. You know, I know that the Bucks County superintendent's. I know that the Bucks County superintendents did likewise, so it was an all-hands-on-deck effort and I thank everybody for, for their hard work. So I think that's the most of it. Our next regular public board meeting is December 5th at 7:30 PM right here and we're certainly looking forward to having our new board. It's exciting. You guys have, you know, you've been in this room enough times that I'm fairly confident that you're not going to run screaming from the room on the 5th. And we, you know, we thank you for your willingness to jump into the pool and engage in public service. So I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thanks, everybody.[1764.83]